This is probably the most important one to look at. We don't care about motion.
Keeping you busy?
Yeah, we haven't even talked about writing the rights of the plant.
Name of the game, right?
Yeah, that's where you're at.
Sure you're busy, you're also busy with your board.
Right.
Oh, the gravel paper, paper plant is a good one. I just asked him if he was going to say.
I guess we can get started, it's a couple of minutes after. Let's call the order of the February 8th meeting of the Cold Spring, the Cold Spring Planning Board. Chair's remarks, we've got nothing, we've got some minutes to do real quick.
So Glenn Watson's gonna be joining us too, we're worried that he might be thinking it's 7:30, but we can get started and try and answer questions, but if there's something we can't appropriately answer.
Okay, great, right, we're just gonna go through the minutes from the last meeting.
He's got room to maneuver.
But this will take long.
That's always important.
These are the January 25th meeting minutes, let me just take a look at them.
Motion to accept the minutes?
I missed that, who made the motion?
I made a motion.
You did now.
I did move to accept the minutes as prepared.
Anyway, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So, the consensus of the board is that the tree is well-known to the village, and that its removal without public notice, I don't remember talking about public notice.
I think what I was making a point of that without, it wasn't public notice, it was more of a, without more of a process.
Well, that's good, because actually that's what I wrote to him yesterday, I think, you know, we have to kind of work through our process.
Yeah.
You know, nobody's trying to delay anything, nobody's trying, but obviously we are in service to the code and the village residents, that's what the whole, that's the point of a planning board is. So before the tree can be removed, you know, as long as there's no life safety issues, we wanted to at least say, you know, and John was CC'd on this last response to him, to say, listen, this is the way it kind of works, is you kind of go through the process and then at the end of the process, everybody, you know, everybody understands things, so then when and if the residents, likely more when than if, the residents have questions, we can kind of say, this was the tree preservation plan that was put in place, this is what we did, you know, as opposed to just taking the word of the developer, you know, we brought in an arborist very quickly who looked at the tree, then I think what we had talked about last week was to bring in Save-A-Tree, which actually is not in here. So, because we had said that since Save-A-Tree, the firm Save-A-Tree did the original intake of the tree, the assessment of the tree and the report on the tree, and then came up with the preservation plan of how the tree was to be treated throughout the site disturbance, which is still ongoing, then they're the best ones to kind of come in and say, okay, here's where we are. It's likely, you know, not that ever two doctors even have an opinion, so I'm sure it's about the same with arborists, and, you know, a lot of people beat the odds, you know, and trees can do that too, but the first arborist said that he thought the tree would likely have to come out, but, you know, things that want to live have a way of surprising, so, but we'll leave it with the experts, but I don't, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think I was pretty clear, John, in my emails, that I don't, I have trouble seeing a life safety issue when a tree is inside a fence, in the middle of the field, inside another fence, in a vacant field, I mean, if a limb were to fall off, I think all that's gonna get damaged is the fence, right?
I think the fence goes...
There's a perimeter around the drip line of the tree.
Yeah, right.
A fence there, then obviously there's a site fence as well, and there's no activity over there. So I said, you know, absolutely, if there's a life safety issue, we gotta deal with that first, but, you know, and maybe even, maybe even prior to going through a process, but I think with, you know, with the, you know, I mean, anybody that followed the, you know, the approvals, that the tree, the Copper Beach tree at Butterfield was a, it's a very, it's a very well-known community, you know, aesthetic resource, it's not a rare tree, but it's well-known to this village, and it was, part of it was to preserve the tree. So, it's our job to kind of, you know, to be able to tell the story as to kind of what happened and how, and what process we went through before the tree's removed, because obviously once it's removed, you know, it's no different than things that are happening at HDRB, it's when things are removed, they're gone, right? So there is no, there is no going back, so we have to make sure that we follow the process correctly and everybody is clear. So I think what we discussed was, that we agreed to bring in Save-A-Tree, right?
Well, we asked that we wanted to see the plan that they were supposed to follow by Save-A-Tree and find out if they actually followed the plan.
I think that's in the EAF that they prepared as part of the Appendix K or something.
Yep, exactly.
It's, which is on your website still, the documentation is still there, and it gives like three or four steps that, you know, they're supposed to follow.
Okay.
It's all, I think it's Appendix K of the EAF from the Butterfield project.
And so, what we discussed, I guess it's kind of broadly covered here, the second opinion being obtained prior to making any recommendation.
If you wanted, we could go further and say, the planning board considered asking the same arborist that had prepared the protection plan for the tree during construction.
That's good.
I'm waiting for you to tell me exactly where do you want to eliminate and what you want to add.
Strike per ends without public notice, close per ends.
Gone.
And then add a third sentence that says, "The planning board considered asking the same arborist that had prepared the protective plan for the tree during construction of the site."
Didn't we say public outcry?
I might have said something.
I don't know if we used the word outcry, but it does sound...
I did say that there were people that would definitely be disturbed, so if I said outcry...
Yeah, I think you used a word stronger than disturbed, though.
Yes, I probably, so he probably got it right.
Outcry is better? Because the words she actually used... It's getting worse, let's just leave it.
Sounds like it was worse than actually recorded.
My point was that there will be people that will definitely say something.
Oh, absolutely, no, absolutely, look, it's, you know, people love that trade, with good reason, okay.
Did you wanna, did you say something about, sorry to interrupt, checking to see if the maintenance plan was followed, I don't think...
Yeah, do we want to put that in?
Can you?
Um, I don't know how much we, I definitely, we definitely, we did, we did discuss it, because obviously that was part of the...
Yes, we did discuss it.
Yeah, that the tree preservation plan...
We wanted to make sure it was in fact followed, as if it wasn't.
So, I guess it would be considered asking the same arborist that had prepared the protection plan for the tree during construction, whether the plan had been followed.
And to give her an assessment of the tree's health.
And to assess.
And then steps forward.
It's nice to have a writer on the board.
Oh, you mean Michael or me?
You.
Oh. But I think we didn't go any further than that, I think we just, we had that conversation, and we'll probably revisit the topic as an agenda item or something.
We will, need to revisit it in the spring. We did say many times in the spring.
Do you have any others? I didn't see anything clearly raised to the...
The bullet, yeah, the second to the bottom bullet point on page two, confirm site complies with code requirements for impermeability, we don't, we don't really have anything in our code with respect to permeable surfaces, but in the, it's really covered in the comp plan, which is, confirm the site meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan, which is even a little strong too, well, I think, I think we can just strike, confirm site complies with code requirements for impermeability, because it's, it's not in the code, it's actually in the comp plan, and it's already covered in Bullet Point 1. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yep, good enough. It's all coming back to me now.
Okay, with those, with those changes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Back it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, correspondence we have done, any reports from the members?
I have to, I have to sort of resign from my volunteer attendance at the CUC, I was very enthusiastic.
It worked.
A couple of meetings at the Code Update Committee, I was very enthusiastic, I told everybody that I would, I would attend, and then I would debrief you guys on what happens at the CUC meetings, but I cannot just, I don't have the bandwidth, guys, I can't do it, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
We understand that totally.
So sorry.
You were self-motivated in that volunteering, so...
Well, it's not that it's not interesting, I mean, I would like to be able to do it, I just, there aren't enough people.
Got it, very good, understood.
Thank you for even entertaining the notion.
If I ever do attend, I'll report back.
Anybody else? Nope, okay, so we're on to old business, which is the updated plans for 126 main, changes since we, since we last met, the, I think many of us were at the HDRB meeting, all of us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
And Sue.
Yeah, Sue as well, who is traveling. And obviously we got some information there, it was mostly, mostly about getting ready for a public hearing, was AKRF's report to the board, so, do you guys wanna present?
We can move update all, I can when I need to.
So, the latest set of site plans, which are C-101 through 107, basically have changes based on feedback from the board, and more calculations and things. So essentially, when we first came to you, the main difference between previous meetings and now is we had proposed a solid concrete paved parking lot throughout, so we're now proposing that the parking lot be surfaced with a pervious favor, it's called true grid paving system, the deep construction details for that are in the plans, and that will now comprise most of the parking area. So from the entrance through the back area, and the only spaces that we are actually proposing to be paved are the hand-me-have accessible space and the accessible aisle for that space, as well as enough space at the front of those two areas to access the ram to the sidewalk. We'd like to provide a smooth paved surface for people to access the sidewalk around the building, so we feel that we've really responded in a positive way to those comments as far as cutting down the impervious surface on the site and reducing it significantly from what was previously there, considering that the gravel parking lot is actually considered impervious surface. So by putting in the true grid, we're actually decreasing the amount of impervious surface on the site, and as a result, some of the drainage and infiltration has changed, we no longer felt that there was the need for the infiltration trenches in these locations, however, we have maintained the, the rip raft runoff trench, and that is to carry the drain, which is, which is really picking up the French drain flying along the alley and this perimeter of the building, as well as a drainage swale between the parking and the adjacent properties. And we've also added a dry well at the back of the site, and that's more clearly indicated in one of the other plans, but that's picking up roof drains and waders, and also the footing drains.
And the sump pump.
Right, the sump pump is, is dealing with the footing drains, so the footing drains, there's no way we can drain to daylight on the site, there's just no possibility of that. So the footing drains would drain into a sump pump, they'd be pumped up into the catch basin, which is, which is a preliminary filtration basin, and as well, the foot, the roof drains will also go into that, those are divided because we can't connect them due to the basement access, so there are two catch basins for the roof drains, and, and those both feed into the same dry well. We've performed perk tests and deep hole tests on the site, all of those calculations and information are on the plans, as well as the peak runoff rates and the drainage calculations.
The bottom line is, we got, if you, if you look at the, the deep tests, we got 12 feet of sandy soil, once we get through topsoil, where there is topsoil, and there's a couple of places we've...
You're cutting down.
Well, it's sand in Putnam County, you know, but, and the bottom line is with the, the, my cheat number is down here, the peak runoff, which is the rate at which runoff leaves the property, is reduced by 48 percent, it's 52 percent of what it is today, it will be 52 percent of what it is today. And the impervious surface is reduced by 56 percent to less than half of what it is now.
So the, all of the drains that you had, you had intended to, the basins and the drains that you hadn't intended to install, what is the, what was the capacity of the, I mean, you, those were intended because, those were originally intended, but it was still considered to be an, or a pervious surface?
Oh, the drains were for when it was all concrete.
That was all when it was all pervious.
Oh, sorry.
It was all pervious, and the wood really...
Oh, impervious. Oh, right, sorry.
Impervious, yes. And you haven't done calculations on those drawings, I think at that point...
We didn't do calculation on those drawings, because we were so close to 100 percent impervious surface, that it was all leaving.
Right.
I mean, almost all leaving, so we said, well, we'll catch what we can, and we, and we put in some bases, but this alternative, which is not an inexpensive alternative, but this alternative creates the pervious surface and gives us just fantastic numbers. Well, post off the charts as they go.
And it looks like this at the top, looking down.
Can I ask a question, I'm just curious about the fill material, what is it, is it a gravel in the, yeah?
You can put gravel, or you can, you could have a grass, you know, planted, we're gonna put gravel.
Got it.
I noticed on that same plan, you, you did identify the two snow storage areas, but on one of the other plans, there's a stockpile of dirt in the upper section where the snow...
On the erosion plan.
Is that just temporary, or is that...
Yeah, that stockpile is temporary.
Okay, all right. Because I was concerned that there's, I think it's 7.8 inches of excavation that has to take place to be able to put the true grid in, the sub base, and the material, and then the stone on top of that, and that dirt stockpile area basically is only gonna hold about 18 cubic yards, and the excavation's gonna be like 112 cubic yards.
But that would just be our topsoil that we were holding on to.
Exactly right, it's just topsoil, so it can be spread and don't...
Okay, so when you're getting near the end, you're gonna be able to spread that out?
Right, right. So I've seen this type of parking lot surface a number of times, and I really love it, so thank you, I know you didn't do it for me, but anyway, thank you.
I've never seen it, a parking lot like this striped, does it, is that something that we're gonna be looking for?
So, you mean the hash marks on the plan?
Well...
The parking spaces?
Oh, 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 oh.
This was just to demonstrate to us, right, you're not planning on trying to stripe gravel on Mississippi.
No.
Well, the true grid actually has a system...
They do, oh, they do, look at that!
Yeah, if you wanted to.
Oh, little plugs.
Right. I don't know that we would do that, but we started to have a lot of fun ideas.
Different colors, Graff?
We wouldn't require that, would we? There's no reason to require striking, as long as there's enough space.
Do you know what's the peak flow of water would be in that drain on the near side, going back to the, the swale going back into the stone?
This?
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't know that at all.
Because my concern would be that if you get any, let's say you get a torrential downpour, you've got the catch basins basically taking the, the sump pump, the roof drain, when that backs up, what ends up happening, it looked like on the plan, when I was looking at it, that there's actually a double outlet for the roof drains, one in the, in the case that the system backs up, that it would actually overflow on the surface, and if that happens, it's gonna go towards that trench.
You mean, it, it's right in here somewhere, right?
Yeah, I think it's up a little bit further, right, yeah, right around there.
Right here.
At least, it was, was that the intent, that it would actually spill out onto the parking lot and to the sidewalk in the event that the system backed up?
Yeah, it will.
Okay. Because ultimately, that water would end up going to the west, which would end up in the trench drain, so you not only have the water flow from...
Well, this is, this is, this is a solid pipe, I believe, and this trench drain ends somewhere in here, at this point, and that's gonna go there, it's gonna be solid and just flow towards this, it's not gonna, it's not gonna...
I thought there was a perforated pipe all the way through.
No, don't believe so.
Not all the way.
Not all the way.
Um...
I think this is a solid pipe. Proposed French drain discharge, solid eight-inch pipe.
Okay, all right.
Well, and it's not the solid concrete anymore either, so...
No, no, no.
Spilling over is less, it's gonna cause less of a problem, it'll get absorbed.
Right. Should it say eight, I'm sorry, you said eight, but I think, I'm reading six on this, on this one.
Did I say, did I say, well...
I mean, it may be a function of it being small.
Where are we? I suppose it's six inch tall.
Oh, you're right, it's six, it's a function of my being old.
Okay.
Oh, no, not even close.
It's not you, it's just your eyeballs.
I don't know. I like the fact that you've noted this snow storage area, even though that's not a requirement, so thank you.
You only have two puny trees back here, then.
Well, you have a...
Well, we could give them in a plan.
No, we have a landscape plan, those are just the two trees that are not gonna be removed from what's there right now.
Of existing.
Oh, I see, MX-24 and MX-15?
Yeah, they're, I think they're sugar maples.
Oh, I was saying, the sugar maple.
Yeah, and then we did, we did provide a landscape plan somewhere.
So I didn't do the calculations on the parking size, Dave did?
Yeah, I mean, basically, at least what I got out of what you did with the density of rainfall and your perk and everything else, it's all based, and the coefficient, it's all based on probably about 90 percent of the whole property, I think it ends up being .22 acres, the overall property's probably like .24, .25, somewhere around there.
It's actually, it's considering the whole site as the project area, it's .229 acres is the total site.
Okay.
So the co, the peak flow rates are using the area as the whole, so not a personal surface.
The perk was really good, too, it was...
Yeah.
I was kind of surprised in a way, because I remember going to the forest when she was there and driving through the puddles all the time, but, you know, after a while, you get a lot, so, yeah.
Once you get down below that, and that's why we claim, that's why they say the top is...
Assert, that's why you assert.
Right.
No, we don't really assert it, the state asserts it, that the gravel, the water bank gravel is compacted, is impervious.
Would there, would there be any benefit to continue that perforated pipe all the way to the stone at the end, wrap it in fabric, and, you know, try to get some of that water into the ground rather than spilling to the backwater and potentially into the next property?
That's an easy enough change, I'll, I'll talk to the engineer about that, and see if it makes...
Why would a solid pipe have been recommended in a case like that? Is it because it's proximate to another buildings?
No, that's, I don't think that's the case, I don't know the answer to that, to tell you the truth, he may have, he, this, my guess is, is that he's caught what he intended to catch at that point, and didn't need to catch it anymore.
I mean, you're down, with that trench, you're down just about as far as some of your perk tests were, and I think it might be some benefit to that, having it seep into the ground rather than continuing all the way into the back.
I don't see any, you know, I don't think it'll make any material cost increase, so we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Oh, I was thinking you were wanting the holes in the pipe to collect more, you're talking about dispersing.
Right.
Oh.
I mean, once it gets past the building, you know, it can bleed into the ground rather than continue this, because it's basically giving, running it out to a spillway.
Right, and there's no building right next to it. Gotcha.
And these plans have been reviewed by AKRF, do they, they have these versions? Okay, and have they, have they reported on them yet, I don't know?
They have, the only, they, they have in their report dated January 30th, and the only thing they asked, but we include the peak flow rates, which we have, but other than that, they did, I think...
Have we given them this version?
This one, I thought that this is new.
I emailed to everyone, so they should have gotten the email, and I left hard copies for the historic review board, so it's kind of their responsibility, but I have emailed them to AKRF, but in their memo, which I assume you got a copy of from the January 30th meeting, which was discussed at the meeting you were at...
That's the memo that they went...
...first, right?
Yeah.
That...
But I thought these were dated, I think these had a February date, though.
Correct, so the only comment that they had, and the only change on these plans that we've added to address that was the peak flow rate, otherwise they seemed to feel that...
This version was, they had the other plans, that's what the report on, this version was emailed to them, just added the peak flow, and the only, the only change was the peak flow rate was added?
The peak flow rate, and we added two interior lights in the alley, and we changed the lighting, and also the fencing.
Plus two lights?
Two lights on the alley side of the building, and we also changed the quantity of lights at the parking area.
Did you increase them or decrease?
We increased them, however, they are dark sky consciously...
Conscious, like they're aware that it was dark before they turned on?
Well...
There are quite a few.
There is technically different, a difference...
There is technically difference, a difference between dark sky compliant and dark sky conscious, so there are lights that...
What is the difference actually?
They're calling it unconscious and compliant.
Well, there are guidelines, and I'm learning this relating experts, but there are guidelines, you know, for a dark sky compliant light, certain...
Wow.
Right, for a full cutoff and all that.
And dark sky conscious or friendly, you know, the light is directed down and out, so you're, it may not meet all of the requirements of a compliant light fixture.
Oh, it's a lesser requirement than compliant.
Correct, right, however, you know, our goal is obviously to shed light down and into the site away from the neighbors' properties, so. And certainly we have no floodlights planned for the building, all of the building lights will also be intended to...
And what was the, the fence, um, the change to the fencing that you referred to?
To put a fence here.
And how, uh... Right, so the change of the fencing, and there is a fence there now, right, so the fence, the fence along this property line right now, if any of you recall or have seen it, it's kind of falling down, it's a mess, and so it needs to be replaced. So that fence is actually gonna come out and be replaced with a new fence that will stand, right? Um, and the intent is to have that along this property line and then continue the fencing, we can't obviously follow the property line which runs through the stream, but we'll dip into the property along the, the approximate fence line that's there now, and then continue inside the property line and turn the corner where there's a gate. And we have been communicating with the neighbors to coordinate, um, combining fencing or, or sharing the fencing, um, and that, we're still trying to work out the details. But we would like to have the, the consistent fence line and fence material continue down the property line. The fencing along the back is in good shape, and the fencing we're proposing is very similar in design, so we're not proposing to change that. And then along the si, this side here, we're also proposing at the intersection of, um, the Silver Spoon property and then the first residential site to also have, um, a wood fencing along this property line to the back.
Is there one, is there one there and down?
So there is a lot of fencing along that property line, and I think it's each owned by the different residential, um, dwellings on that. So it's different sizes and different shapes, um, I think this is the one property which doesn't have a fence, and we actually met with that property owner.
Is that Albrecht or is that Valentine?
And they actually requested that we do put a fence there because they are concerned about headlights and night time, so, um, so we'd like to just kind of tidy up the property line by having a consistent fence line along the property line.
What are the heights of the fences that are currently there?
So all of the stockade running along here, and that changes to a solid with a picket above, um, are all six foot fences. To be honest, I don't know how high the stockade fence is, I'd have to go back and measure it, but I think it's at least five, if not six feet. And then I would say the same is true of the fence at the Albrechts, but I don't know.
I feel like that was a lower fence.
Little lower.
Yeah.
And then there's a chain link between, um...
Oh, right at the back of the parking area?
And, and, um, the Silver Spoon, and we're proposing to keep that in place.
You're proposing to keep the chain linking in place?
At, between the Silver Spoon and, um, and one twenty-six.
But, and add a stockade?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, so the stockade would begin at the end of the Silver Spoon property and just be between...
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I was, I didn't recognize the cutoff between the Spoon and Albrecht.
And, and I think the planning board is only allowed at its discretion to go to a five foot fence, correct?
Right.
Um, it could go higher, and I think there's a section that Karen had referred to, it said it should be at least five feet, correct?
Right, in between a commercial, uh, residential.
Residential. And then if it's residential zoned, it can't be higher than four feet, but you don't have that issue here, right? This is business zone.
Well...
Oh, I'm sorry.
What are the adjoining, it's wherever the fence sits?
Yeah, which property is the fence going on?
Right.
On our property, but right inside the property line.
And you're a zone business, right?
We're a zone business, and it says it should be of an initial height of not less than five feet and adequate ultimately to screen all operations.
Right, so it could be six feet, it could be eight feet, I don't know if you want to go much higher than eight feet, but you have discretion.
Yeah, fencing is a, uh, is a hot topic as well.
But now, remember, it's, it's the residential zone where it can't be higher than four feet, so that doesn't apply here, cause you're in business. So you can certainly go five, six feet.
Well, this is being one, this is what we're proposing.
And you're proposing six feet, right?
We're proposing five, eight.
Yeah, but didn't you say the one in the back is six now?
It is six, so that would remain.
So you're not trying to match?
We're not changing that. We're matching styles, and our preference would be to keep it at five feet, however, you know, at the public hearing, we may have the public who wants it higher, but our, our intent is to do a solid lower part with a picket topper.
Has there...
And if, if we can, we'd like the solid part to be four feet with a foot of topper, but if...
So roughly a four foot block to like...
Correct, and then a five feet height, but if...
What is the, what is the travel distance of like headlights as they, as they navigate the parking lot and...
It depends on the type of headlamp.
Yeah.
Vehicle too.
Yeah. And we're sort of, um, so I think the properties that really have the concern are the ones on Garden Street.
Right.
And our property's a little higher than theirs, so the headlights are really shining in their windows, and that's where all the parking is. Um, so we talked, we actually talked to the Valentines, um, in person, and they said that it was, it was a re, they had a lot of questions about, am I gonna rent space? And how much parking is there gonna be at night with the lights, and, um, you know, I'm not intending to work twenty-four seven, I'd like to close, you know, in the evening and... But it does really shine right into their house, so, um, I think with our height, even the lower fence will prevent that. But, um, if we get too low, I guess we could be looking down into their house again, so I understand, I'm not a big fence person, but...
Your property's not really steep, kind of like...
No, but we are elevated from their property, yeah, so, um, I'm not a big fence person myself, but I, I don't know, if I had to look at a parking lot, I think I'd rather have some kind of buffer.
Yeah.
It is a mishmash of fences back there though.
So can you tell, I'm sorry, I might, you have, may have made this point already, but the, the fence on the east side goes along McCaffrey's and then, um, and then Heffernan's, I think? That's all one consi, right now, that's one consistent?
No, it's a mishmash of materials and...
Right, and, and what is the one along Heffernan's right now?
It is similar to that style, but it's taller than, um, so we'd like to have a five foot total fence, but we may end up going to six feet if neighbors feel they need more light protection, um, so the existing fence is about a six foot fence, and it has about eighteen inches of a picket, so it could open and then solid below. That's Heffernan's and also along Seth Gallagher's, Seth Gallagher's property, which projects behind.
All right, yeah, okay.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, is there a view, I'm not sure what to call it, but a view that would show the angles of the lights and the fences, so looking at it horizontally? So we could see where the car lights might shine over the fence?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, whether or not there is, and, and I'm not even familiar with whether or not there is a, they must know the path of travel of, of headlights as the, as our navigates the site.
Yeah, and I'm also thinking about the, um, the parking lot lighting and what, you know, to be sure that is gonna hit below the fence line.
And the fixtures, are you doing bollards or are you doing posts, bollards?
Bollards that, and that's one of the kind of tricks to finding something, cause we'd like them just to be shining down into the parking lot and not...
Yeah.
So a lot of them shed a circular light and don't have screens, so...
And the dock has been a great example of that. People think lower light is bad, it is amazing how much more clearly you see when you don't have the glare of that light in your eyes.
Yeah. But we need something that's sort of doing a half circle of projection, so...
To get the, yeah, to, to get the, the walkway fully lit, yeah.
And not be lighting the neighbor's property.
Exactly, yeah.
Whereas the lights at the, at the waterfront, which are great, project all around, so we're looking for a fixture that we can direct into the site that wouldn't have a full circular lighting pattern.
Right.
So this is one that we're considering, we're actually getting some lighting calculations done on that and pricing, um, but that's, the goal is, again, have the light shine down and in.
Yeah, to direct it right to where it's needed.
Right, is, um, it, are, are these, are the locations of these designated, um...
They are.
And, and I'm interested, this, the choices that you say you're considering here are, are maybe two heights, um...
So the higher ones would be the parking area to shed more light.
These forty-three inches?
Correct, and then the lower ones, we have proposed for the front garden area, which...
That should be nice.
Now, if you don't get these, um, what would you get?
Something similar, I mean, we're, we...
Are the heights written into this, into the plan?
They aren't because we haven't specified, we have to get our lighting fixtures approved by the historic review board, so, um, once those are approved and we know...
Even in the rear yard?
Well, they're gonna be visible from the street.
Well, they've, and they've got some of the front.
They're gonna be behind.
Oh, you got them in the front.
So you want a consistent fixture.
Correct, right, so this, obviously this isn't any technical information, but this is the size of a very big vehicle and a headlight height, um, just as a general study, a link to that.
And what, and so on center, it's...
No, the top of the light, I had it about forty-two inches above the ground, but again, that isn't a study of how the light shines up.
Yeah, the photometrics are more like that, as opposed to, they're not going like that, they're going, they're fanning, yeah.
Right, correct, so I mean, headlights generally don't shine way up, however, um, you know...
The advantage is that the, the property slopes down as you get to the back of the property, so as people turn in, it's actually gonna be, you know, more in a downward angle, not much. I mean, it's fairly level, but it is on a somewhat sloping, you know, down rather than, you know, somebody's second floor.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does the HDRV consider the height of the lights?
Of the, which ones?
The lights?
The headlights?
Let me, not, I'm sorry, not that, that, I'm thinking of the bollards, if the...
The bollards? I wouldn't think so.
Just design.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking about like, are we, do we consider the impact of light, or is that the HDRV?
We're gonna have to, because of the, because the, it's essentially two uses abutting each other.
Right.
Residential and, and commercial, which is, you know, always sensitive because it's, they're...
So, I guess I, well, where I'm going with the, the question was, I just wanted to understand, I wanted to make note that, um, the applicant hasn't determined which ball, like, which lighting fixtures are going to use that will inform the height, the eventual height, the, whether or not, you know, would the HDRV approve?
Yeah.
And is that depending upon the height, that can, that may or may not have impacts, um, so I just wanted to...
Right, and the, yeah, and the first gating issue is demolition, right?
Right.
As to what's being used, I mean, I think, you know, I was thinking, just when we were at the hearing, that we could forego a public hearing for this, but I'm not sure that we really can. Because I would think that it, regardless of what they, what they, how they rule on secret, what their determination is, ultimately what the, what the elements will be, which are really gonna be, the biggest public input is really gonna be the two uses, right? The commercial use up against the, up the, up against, you know, all this residential, right, which is gonna have to do with things like lighting and screening and fencing and, um, and if that's not decided... Yeah, you know, what do you think, John?
Um, you know, it's up to the board whether they wanna have a public hearing, you guys have your site plan issues, and there are, you know, there are some. So you can maybe see how the public hearing goes, um, before the HDRV, before you decide to have a, a public hearing.
So if there's not a lot of people screaming about fences and lighting, it could be our cue?
Yeah, then maybe, yeah.
That would be fine, that would be fine.
I didn't imply, I didn't wanna imply that they would actually scream.
There might be an outcry, you never know.
And I'll tell you, and I'll tell you, and I'll tell you, you guys are doing the right thing, I mean, it's the one thing that I think would fix a lot of problems, is talking to people before you do things. You know, you can put all the signs up you want and all the public notices in the newspaper, but it's really neighbors talking to neighbors or saying, here's what we're gonna do, what do you think of this? You know, and you guys have really done a commendable job, you know, you know, with what you're doing to really get people to understand what you're doing. Because a lot, like with most things in life, most people just wanna be heard and you don't wanna get to a point where it's too late and you say, well... And that's the biggest problems we've had in the village, where people just felt like they weren't heard, and they didn't understand the process, and they wanna be heard, and, you know, sometimes that's an article seventy-eight. You know, and sometimes it's, you know, and sometimes it's, could be avoided by a conversation with neighbors, so I think that, I think there should be a good indication of that, I would think at the public hearing for the HDRV. Uh, that's good advice, we'll see how that one goes and then make the determination, because...
Can I just ask you a question though? So we have this kind of time constraint, and the site work is majorly impacted by that. Whereas we have from April to November, to get in and get this work done before we need to be quiet again. So if now you're talking about waiting till the end of February to determine whether you're gonna have a public hearing, is it possible for us to set a date for a public hearing? For your public hearing now, so that it's on the calendar and then we can cancel it if you don't feel like you need it?
Oh, so provisionally? And then transfer to...
Well, if you... You can, you can just have it, but it, I mean, I know, maybe if they go to the first one, know where to show up, but, and you could decide not to have it and cancel it, but it's not only the first of April, but we have to have, we have to take those trees down in March, or else we're gonna lose a year.
Right.
Oh, because of the bats?
Because of the bats?
Right.
Well, because of the bats, yeah, right, and we did get a, we did get a permission from DEC to cut down the trees in March. Originally, it was only one month, November, to cut down the trees.
But these are private trees, do they have to be related to your, is it?
It's potential impact, it's a potential impact on the eagles and, uh, secret, yeah, so if we don't...
Oh, because of secret?
Right.
Oh, any tree removal?
Right.
Any tree removal from November first to March thirty-first is, is okay.
Is allowed.
But wait a minute though.
Not for the bats?
Outside of the set bats.
Yeah, outside of bats.
Right. But outside of bats will roost in the trees over the summer.
But it's only November first to November thirtieth for the potential impact on eagles. Now, we went through quite a lengthy document to, to, to demonstrate that, that we didn't really have the impact on the eagles, you know, because of, it's because of distance and mostly because of visibility. So they did say, okay, but you gotta do it in March, and you gotta do it, they want it real close to the end of March.
By the end, yeah, trying to hit the end of March.
So, so it's really important for us to get through this process, so we can do it.
Yeah, and, and we don't wanna hold it up, there's no reason to, to stop it.
I guess, I'm not clear, yeah, I, I, I don't wanna, so, I'm just, I'm not clear, forgive me, but I'm just not clear on why one wouldn't be permitted to remove...
Remove a tree?
Remove a tree?
Because we're under secret, we can't do anything.
Exactly, because Pandora's, because Pandora's box has been opened.
Oh, cause you've already opened it.
If we didn't have the secret review, we would've taken it down and not...
Oh, I see, if you had taken it down before applying everything.
Probably would've been insensitive, but we would've done it.
We would've been insensitive, that's right.
The one, one thing I'd be concerned about is if we schedule it, I think we should have it, because if we schedule it and then somebody can't make the, the historic review boards, that they're planning on making ours, and then we cancel it, I think you open up a whole nother can of worms.
That's fine, I mean, it's...
But can, is it possible to hear what we don't know is locked down?
We don't know fence height, we don't know lighting height, but...
Is that it?
That's something we can learn the night of the public hearing.
Okay. Of the HDR, of the historic board or office?
Yeah, that's true, I mean, if we, if we get, maybe good out, you know, good attendance is actually a good thing, and then if they, if people could come in and, um... Yeah, that's true, I mean, if we, if we get, maybe good out, you know, good attendance is actually a good thing, and then if they, if people could come in and, um, I know when I, when I got a variance from my garage, I got more than it was just to write a letter of support, right, and, and it was, um, you know, the, the ZBA at the time appreciated understanding what the neighbors, what the current owners want, you know? But I think if they want fencing and they believe that a four-foot fence, you know, is high enough, right, 'cause the five-foot picket's up to, it's a, is, you know, is, is not a block, then I think that would be really good information for this board to have, 'cause I certainly don't wanna own this height of the fence, right, to say, it's enough, it's not enough. Because there's, there's two, there's, you know, there's, there's two pieces to a fence, right? Like you said, you're not a fence person. Some people don't want to see fencing.
Right.
Some people don't wanna see light, some people believe they can have both, right, which isn't true, right? So the question is, well, where's, you know, where's the sweet spot? You know, is it, is it a four-foot fence, or is it, you know, are you more impacted by the light, you know, by the, you know, by the, the, you know, the travel of headlamps? Or, um, or just the, the, you know, the constancy of a, of a, of a physical, physical break with respect to air flow or whatever else, if people have a sense of.
It would seem to me that the neighbors, I can understand the light intrusion, but it would seem to me that the, that the argument for a fence, you, you mentioned before, it's residential on the other sites, their backyard is their private places.
Right.
It's a parking lot, somebody said they didn't wanna look at a parking lot. It, I don't think the fence, in terms of having a fence, will be a big issue.
Seems like they're all.
I don't either, I don't either. No, my question is the height.
Yeah, you want people to go down.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know you're concerned about the height. Well, we can, we can look at that. We can, we can, we can look at, we can look at that.
Right.
But again, there's no right answer, you know? Higher obviously blocks more light, but it gives you more visual obstruction, right? So, I mean, it's, the question is really what?
What about the vegetation that's, that is.
Did you see the landscape plan that's proposed? I mean, um, you did send it.
No. It's gonna.
There you go. Yeah.
Name, have it there.
Solder hair.
Okay.
Um, I'm just wondering if that comes into play along with fence.
Uh, you know what, it's kind of an awkward area, because all the other boundaries of the property, there's, there's a good amount of room to plant and know that you're gonna be successful. Right there, it's, it's not real wide, and, um, there is a weird drop-off.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's.
And then the swale, so I'm not, I'm not a fan of planting a hedge there myself, I just, I'm not sure if that's a good idea for the drainage. So I think something lower, um, and maybe some vines on the fence to, um, make it just look nicer.
Yeah.
But it's just kind of a weird spot. If you ever have a chance to go walk back there, you'll see what I mean. There's not a lot of space to do things with.
Yeah, that's why, I was just wondering, 'cause I saw here that it said, proposed evergreen hedge.
Yeah, that was the initial, that was the initial landscape, um, idea, but then when Rosedale came in, we sort of looked at that and said, that's not gonna be feasible there.
Doesn't this impact the snow storage area?
Well, what we're putting back there, first of all, he has arborvitae, which I don't like.
Right.
Um, I'd like to put, like, a, a deciduous tree back there and then keep it low, and most of the other things that are proposed back there are perennials
Right.
that should go dormant in snow time and not be affected by the pile, so.
Okay.
Um, this is, you know, a preliminary idea that, um, they made for me. I haven't negotiated with them. I have some strong feelings about certain plants.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
I had a cool question.
So now there's no hedge, there's, there's, what you were saying, uh, there's no hedge line.
Right, we were going with vines and maybe eucalyptus and some grasses. Actually, we use the trees for trips. Um, they have a great site with a lot of good, um, suggestions, so we tried to incorporate some things there, and we have that list.
If we, if we schedule a public hearing, do you think that you'd be ready with the lighting and also the fencing to be able to say, this is what we wanna do, rather than, well, we may do this or we may do that?
Most definitely, because my plan was to be ready next week, or at the very least in time for the historic review board.
Oh, so you will have it resolved by then?
Yeah.
That's our intent.
Oh, okay.
Because we need to have our fence approved by historic review board, so we need, we need to define the, the size and the.
Right.
And the light picture.
And the lighting, so, um, so if that's the case and everything's ready for the public hearing on the twenty-first.
How does the, but how does that work with the HDRV approving a fence? They don't have the authority to approve, I mean, 'cause it's a four-foot fence in the district.
All they're looking at is design.
They're just doing a, they, uh, the.
The height, height's usually zoning board.
But the height is not, it's not a four-foot fence in the district. I think you're thinking of a residential district.
Yeah, you're not.
There's no limitation in the business district.
For them, it's more, it's, for everybody, really, it's more aesthetics.
Right. They approve the style of the fence, but we're gonna define what that is.
Oh, so there's no.
The residential district defines height, restricts height.
Let's take a look.
And I guess we, we're certainly not clear who was in charge of fences and height and.
Everybody, everybody is in, in charge of fences.
You know, it's a mixed community in the village, right?
Yeah, it is.
Everybody and no one.
That's why I invited Aaron tonight, and because it's something you brought up before, so I have not found anything in the code that restricts the height of fencing in the business.
No, I, I did a search today, too.
Okay, good.
And there's only a couple paragraphs, and one on the residential, one on the business.
Really?
It's it, residential can't be higher than four feet, business, it has to be at least five feet.
And they're putting it on, on their property, so.
And it's all gonna go on the business parcel.
And then in, and then in light industrial, it has to be something like at least eight or something, right?
Okay, well, that makes it easier.
Before, I wanna go back to, I wanna harp on lighting. Um, so, the quality of, the quality of the light, you know, uh, LED is very wise, of course, but, um, I don't know if you've, you've noticed, in the village, um, Central Hudson has changed the, the lamps, and they've, they've become, a, a lot of them became very cold, very, they were very bright, but they were, they were very, very cold, and I'm, and I'd like to, if I'm, if, if it's in our purview, I'd really like to tell you what heat quality to use on your light bulbs. I know that sounds so didactic, but I, I'm right there, I'm, I'm, because.
And it's just your opinion.
It is just my.
Because I really like the cool lights compared to the warm ones.
You like those cool. Well, the thing is, is they are, they are, they are bad for vegetation, and they also are, um, they will, they will mess with one's circadian rhythm at night. So they're, they're not a healthy, the cold, cold lights.
So what's. I didn't realize all this about, you know, I had a box of light bulbs in my basement for years and ran out and had to go to Home Depot, and I did buy lights, and
many times.
the room was weird, and I went to back and I was like, and he said, oh, these are, I don't know, cool or light or that, so.
Yeah.
There's so many different shades of lighting now.
So you like the more day, daylight, is that what, and you like the more night blue?
Well, I will, I will say that my, my preference is a warmer light, but, but also, I, my preference is for a warmer light, because it's, the cooler light is, um, documented as being bad for vegetation, and so.
Which is the bluer.
The bluer ones, and, so I was concerned about the trees on Main Street, and thought that was, and then somebody had, drew my attention to an article about, um, the light waves and, and how it will, um, impact sleep cycles, and, um, so, and again, on Main Street, oh, people living there.
Give me another thing to worry about with my sleep, so, yeah, really.
Check your lights.
You're having a lighting plan done related to candle wa- you know, candle flicking hour, because, I mean, basically.
I mean, we weren't going crazy, to be honest. I was getting information on the spread of the light, so we can determine our exact spacing.
Right.
And we're looking for lights that are, are pointed down and into our site.
Right.
So.
So it's, 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 I mean, the purpose behind that, basically, is safety. You know, people get out of their car, they can see where they're walking.
Right.
You know, and that's, whether you go cold or warm or hot or whatever, it's gonna affect how, the spacing on the lighting, I think.
Right.
You know, so.
Right.
Not that people are sleeping and talking, or something.
No, you're right.
I had, I had considered that.
So I think if it ends up being warmer rather than colder, you end up with more light fixtures.
I didn't mean to, that wasn't my intention, I'm just interested in.
Is that, is that right?
A lower impact on, on the sleeping of the neighbors and the vegetation.
I mean, if those, if we end up going with those fixtures, for example, the tallest one, the top of the fixture, is below the height of the solid fence that we're playing with.
It's, it's not gonna impact the neighbors.
So we're, you know.
But the ones across the, you see that now, but the ones across the parking lot will be visible to the Valentine.
These might, these.
No, no, these, those are.
Right.
These will.
Reasonably.
I don't think those will.
The parking lots, if they're taking it, it will.
There are, there are, if it were.
The Valentines are lower, and the fence should be blocking.
These are all.
No, no, but there, but there are, they're across the property, so.
Right, they're over here. Yeah. If you're at the Valentine's, you're not gonna be able to see those lights.
Maybe, maybe. Well, from your second floor windows looking down.
You can see in, too, from a staircase.
Well, okay, you're right, on the second.
But there's reflected light as well, based on whatever it's reflected off of.
And if a white car is parked there.
Okay, all right, so.
Anyway. Something to consider.
We know there won't be a puddle to reflect.
Right, that's right. Mitigation, first.
That's true.
Okay. If we could put some black holes around, just to suck the light in and.
Yeah, I think if, if we can be sure we can be ready for a public hearing, I think it's fine to schedule. And obviously, if you're gonna be ready with the lighting plan, the fencing plan, you know, the final dimensions on the fence.
Right.
Um, we'll know at that point what the HDRV has approved. Well, will we?
So if we have all of that information ready for the public hearing on the twenty-first, could that be presented at that time? As part of our, you know, collaboration on the secret review, so.
Presented to?
Well, we're having a public hearing on the twenty-first, and if we have the lighting and fencing determined at that time, can it be presented as a more detailed collaboration of our secret review and reviewed at that time, thus negating the need for a planning board of hearing?
Well, I, I think they're gonna kind of wait and see, but you may just want them to have to, to schedule the public hearing just to be safe.
But then Dave was saying, if we're gonna schedule it.
We got a hole in it, so.
I, I agree. I think if we're gonna schedule, we do have it. I think that once you set the, 'cause you don't look, you don't know what people, when people are paying attention and when they're not paying attention. If they pay attention to one and not the other one, they're gonna say, I knew when the public hearing was, and I, I, I picked the one that didn't happen, you know?
So should we do one on the twenty, I mean, can we, should we have one on the twenty-nine? Do we have what we need now to?
We don't have what we need now, that's the, that's the point, it's just to say that.
Is there a twenty-nine?
Oh, no, there's not, it's.
Twenty-second?
No.
That's right, it's February.
Right, would you have it on the twenty-second?
The next day.
The next.
Like, almost like a joint one, but not really.
Just two days in a row.
When's your next meeting after that? Would it be the second, second Thursday in March? It would be the eighth.
Second week of March.
Yeah.
So that's really pushing things back.
Yeah.
I don't think we should, if we don't have to, we couldn't wait that far, but can we? Is it really chancy to set a public hearing?
One day.
Pending, pending the outcome of the HDRV public hearing. It seems a little dodgy.
I'm not worried about canceling. I don't think it's that volatile an issue, we're, mm, this is not like some situations where we've had. I think we could schedule it and cancel it, if we don't have it.
Why wouldn't we hold it?
Yeah.
Well, I, if it, we're pushing it till March.
I mean, if we scheduled it, like, oh.
It, 'cause it, and it just holds them up for.
Right.
Can I make a coordinating comment?
Yes.
It would seem to me that the planning board, um, needs to have a public hearing around the fencing especially, because the planning, the way I understand it, the planning board could require an increase in height if the community wants it.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
But the zoning board can't require an increase in height at all, either.
Right, neither can the HDRV. That's what I'm thinking, and we do have to, it, it, I had hoped that we'd kind of avoid it, just for your own time schedule as well, and just, just, 'cause we're, you know, trying to be, you know, pro everything and just get people moving. Um, you know, it's not just business, business is obviously important, the schedules are even tighter, but, um, but I think that's true. I think that, I think the fencing is the one thing that really what, I wasn't really thinking of that night, is that if there's this, this public desire for, for, for more light barrier versus less fencing, whatever the balance is, um, that the planning board should take that input before they decide.
Should we do it on the first? I mean, is there any reason why we have to do it at the second, you know, is there, is there any reason why we can't just look at a date that works for it?
Part of, well, what part of its space, whether or not there's a room.
The library is very nice.
No, I, I wouldn't do that. You mean, go to a different venue, I don't.
It's so pleasant there. No, 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 I mean, the quality of meetings there is just really, very.
Right. But you should have it where you normally have it, unless it's extenuating circumstances, if you know, like, five hundred people are gonna show up.
So, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Then you'd relocate it.
Okay. So would we have enough time to advertise for the twenty-second?
Will we know what we need to know by the twenty-second?
Well, theoretically, we're gonna know what we need to know by the twenty-first for that public hearing, so we should know it.
I think the notice would have to be at the paper, is it Friday or Monday? Friday or Monday for Wednesday?
I think Monday, I think Jeff.
Monday before eleven?
Monday, yes. I think it was Monday, maybe close the business on Monday?
It has to go in twice, right?
Twice, right?
Yeah, that would hit the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
It was always noon on Monday. I don't know if he's changed it.
Yeah, it was, it was always.
It was always noon on Monday.
Because we're actually hoping, it depends on how our zoning board meeting goes next week on the fifteenth, but we're hoping to have the public hearing for the zoning board on March first, if all falls into place, so.
So if you could always schedule the public hearing for the twenty-second, if you don't have the information, you can always push it off.
Is that right? Can we have the first Thursday?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, it's premature, 'cause we haven't met, but that's our hope.
That's, that's my understanding of what the schedule could be.
Yeah.
Would you ever consider a joint zoning and planning public hearing on the first?
What do you think?
You know, I don't, I don't see why not, if that, if that helps. I mean, that might be more of a help to the community as well as the applicants, I'm not sure.
What's the, the ZBA, is it a special use permit?
Correct.
To allow it.
Front setback to be zero.
And that's it, right? There's no other variances, just that special use permit?
What's the special use permit?
There's a provision in the code that allows you, because it's, because it's Main Street, I think, right?
Well, it's anywhere in the village, but it's, it's, it's the residential districts for sure.
And business.
It allows it, so you can get relief from the front setback of twenty-five feet.
Oh, a var, just for the variance.
No, it's a special use permit.
No.
It's a special use permit.
It's a special use.
Oh, that's right, that's what we call it.
They call it a special use permit, because the idea is, you know, Main Street, you want the buildings up front.
Right.
But the archaic code, Euclidean zoning, has all the setbacks back.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really work, especially for Main Street, to have those setbacks. So what they do is, if you're on Main Street or certain streets, you know, they're, they allow you to seek a special use permit to get a zero setback.
Right.
It is, the difference is, it's more a matter of right to get a special use permit than it is to get a variance.
Right, the standard's a little bit less.
Right.
It doesn't have to be self-imposed?
No.
Well, 'cause it's already considered, it's already anticipated under the code, by special use permit.
Right, it's tatted out to the legislation saying it's, it's permitted.
It's a permitted use, as long as you ask for.
As long as you meet certain conditions.
And meet the conditions, right, yeah. Understood. I would be fine with that, if people, I don't, can people make March first?
I can, I think so.
Oh, Jesus, I can't wait. Oh, but that's fine, I mean.
Do you have a wedding on the first?
No, it's on the third.
We're waiting now, I have my.
Are we flying, I, I think we're flying out on Friday, though. I think we're flying out on Friday, I think that's my, that's my nephew, so it's not something to miss.
I just can't get the signal, so.
Joint public hearing, March first?
Do you have to read that with your board, or can you just make that?
I don't.
The, yeah, I mean, the board has, the entire board has to vote on setting the public hearing.
Right.
So, you're meeting on the fifteenth?
So we could do that the fifteenth.
So that would still give us two weeks for the publication, so the fifteenth is next Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that would still be two weeks. So, you guys are basically, you guys can take a vote to conditionally set a joint public hearing, subject to the ZBA.
Subject to their acceptance of us.
Subject to the ZBA agreeing to have in their public hearing.
To schedule theirs, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the only reason that we would not do that is if not enough board members show up.
Hope you don't have a quorum.
We're down.
Could that, could that motion say, and then the alternative of just hold the public hearing?
That was my next question, so if for some reason the ZBA can't schedule it for March first, you guys still wanna go forward with the planning board, or is the planning board still willing to go forward on a special meeting on Mar- March first?
I think that's fine, but obviously, we've established.
If the ZBA can't, can't get the quorum, or whatever reason.
Yeah, and obviously, we've established, we've established there's a room ready.
Okay, so basically, you guys are going forward on March first, and it could be a joint, could not be a joint public hearing.
Yep. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second? Second.
You're getting what you want.
I know, I'll take it, I'm just making the point.
Did you get that, Michael?
I'm just making the point, you just said, well, as long as we have a room, but they do, of course, does have a regular meeting on the first.
Like the way I.
Unless everybody speaks up.
Who does?
Right.
So, I guess they could go on that.
Who does?
We'll figure out.
The HTRB?
Zoning does.
No.
No, zoning does.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if they don't have quorum, you have the room.
So like, if they don't wanna have it, that they wanna have.
The only reason they wouldn't have it, he said, is if they don't have quorum to set it.
No, I know, but they might still have a regular meeting that night.
They might still have a regular meeting.
You don't have anything though, right? Is there anything in front of the board?
Um, potentially.
Right, but if, if it's a small group, we can split up, we can present in the hall.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there. There's that other room that you guys use.
For the ZBA?
Yeah.
You guys should go to the small room if, if it's not a public meeting. Thank you, you can't have a public hearing in your small room.
It's nice to go outside.
Holding a public hearing in the small room, it's, you, you don't, you don't want public.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So the HTRB hearing is on the twenty first, okay.
Um, do we have any reason to ask them to come back the twenty second?
If you really have to.
Or are we just gonna listen to what they talk about on the twenty first?
I think we'll do that, I think we should review, we, we should review what we've got here, obviously, this, we haven't had a whole lot of time with this stuff. You know, so if people wanna spend any time going through the hard copies that are here, um, the parking tables that were sent, and then also the, were just, that we have here in a hard copy.
The, the other thing too, is if they're gonna have the, the fencing, the lighting resolved on the twenty first, then we can look at that on the twenty second.
Okay, so we'll still have a twenty.
Cause that is a good idea, actually, to review it, yeah, and then we'll also have some feedback.
Right.
And then people can take a little bit of time with this stuff, they can have questions on the twenty second at a workshop, and then finalize everything on the first.
So you can electronically, or drop it off, or whatever, so we, we can have it on the twenty second, and then we'll be more than ready on the first.
Okay, do we wanna go over the list of neighbors to contact, or?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, um, so. Um, I have a, I have a tax map in front of me. Yes, I think you're gonna.
Happy, happy, bound, you're bound, I'm Albert.
Yeah, so is this, is this who the HTRB asked for?
Um,ikeska, and.
Um, that's the list that I've submitted with all the applications, so we're, we are notifying all of the adjoining neighbors, and we've added, um, this one, just because they're not applying, they're.
But you've added fifty five?
We added the, we added the Percocello's, correct. The Percocello's and the Scangos on the corner, we added.
Oh, right, that's their Percocello.
This one is owned by Bob McCaffrey, and he's gonna be notified.
Number forty?
His property, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Um, so you added forty-six and fifty-five, right?
Correct.
I think that's, I think that's very thorough.
I'm, no, no problem. Okay.
Okay, so we, actually, just, let me just read it out real quick. Let's get the lots. On the tax map, forty-six, forty-seven, I'm sorry. Forty-two through forty-seven? No, sorry.
Forty.
Forty-one through forty-seven, or continue to this forty-one. It's forty-two, oh, they, what, good lord, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four. And you added forty-six as well, right, this can just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So forty-one through forty-six, I'm sorry, forty-one through forty-seven, continue to, you know, the full list.
Mm-hmm.
Um, fifty, fifty-four, and fifty-five. For public notice by certified return receipt mail, and then it's obviously just the standard, bring in your mailing slips and however many green cards you can get back. As you well know. You know the drill.
Great.
All right, anything else?
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, please.
Thank you so much, thanks for coming in.
Thank you. It's the lighting inspection that got, when somebody's tired.
Thank you.
Nope, it's not lighting inspection.
I don't know if she gave that to us or just let you look at it.
The lighting inspection?
Lighting inspection.
No, not that, it was just the one with the.
The all, the light of all reason.
It was sitting on top of something.
Oh, you know what, it may be in with your, you know, it took, you know.
This is a pile of ink.
It was sitting here.
Might have ended up with it.
Sorry, what's your?
Made off of it?
Yeah, you know, I rob people's papers.
Encourageable paper thief.
That's in here.
Ah, here's the one.
Thank you. Looks great.
Those are all yours.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Oh, very nice.
I'm ready. All right, so we'll leave copies of these here, if anybody wants to come and review them, um, then we'll go over them again, twenty second.
Where did they live, where they're here?
Uh, there's a, in the small room.
Okay.
In the small room, yeah.
Okay.
I'll send them in there now.
So they're not in the, in the secret mailbox behind the?
Well, that's when they come in, if they're still in the mailbox, they're sitting in there, but then, once they come in, they go, go in the bins, in the, which are now, the new clerk's keeping in the, um, in the small room.
Okay, I didn't, that's why I was confused.
They used to be, they used to be locked up in the office.
If all goes well, when do you think you're gonna be actually open?
I'm behind schedule.
Yeah.
I was hoping for the fall, but maybe. They're only twenty minutes. The shop that I'm working at is closing, so there's a lot of desperate hitters.
Oh.
There may be pickets out, you know.
They're all gonna show up at the public hearing.
Oh, God.
I hope that's what you want.
What's the question we have?
Yeah, you, you said you were submitting an application, I forgot.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it, there's a question that I have.
I'm, I'm gonna go.
Good night.
Read all the bats?
I don't think I do, I'm sending a question to Jeff.
That was all news to me, I mean, there's not even any bats here. The, the northern long-haired bat isn't even in Phillipsville. And the fact that they have to, like, watch their tree cutting because of it.
Once you, once you go, yeah, so now, on Seeker, I was doing it for a friend of mine who's doing a project, you have to go on the mapper, right, Kiffy Anderson on the Seeker mapper, and then it comes up with any effect, so you get sturgeon, you get bald eagles, you get, cause it's, it is a stone's throw, but that's stone's throw, you're not getting a sturgeon, you know, up Main Street.
Yeah.
You know?
It, it was also constantly changing, you know, like, because of.
Oh, right, of course.
Climate fluctuations.
But I was, I was a little scared after that meeting, because, you know, my husband's building was his art studio, and we're on over an acre, but it's still an accessory building, so it doesn't.
There must be bats back there.
No, we don't have, we just have little brown bats.
Yeah.
But we don't have the, we don't have the long-haired bats.
Long hair.
But, but also, we don't have to do seeker, because it's not a separate address, it's an accessory building.
It's a.
Accessory building.
Under our code, it's clearly, you know, exempt from all that.
Exempt.
Thank God, if we had subdivided the lot and made it a separate parcel?
Right. No new business, we have no public, we have no public to comment?
Bats.
Good night.
Uh.
Public has exited.
Board business, so obviously, we're, uh, I responded to Butterfield, just let them know that we're, you know, we're just going through the process on the tree. Um, and then I responded to the mayor, the mayor's gonna reach out to save the tree, to have them come back in, just to give an opinion. And then we can kind of get that report, and then just kind of close the loop. Cause obviously, it's a, it's a condition of approval on a site plan, it's an ongoing site, you know, it's not, you know, it's certainly not substantially complete. And, and then the easement, John checked, the easement was recorded, so it is recorded over the county, Butterfield has already, um, made indication that they're, well, it's close to an offer, but to, just to replace the tree with a specimen tree, they're not, uh, the easement doesn't really address that, it's kind of silent on that, it talks more, the easement assumes the tree will live forever, and just, nobody should be trimming it, that's what the easement's about, it doesn't address if a tree were to, were to die. Yeah, so, um, we'll have to kind of cross that bridge when we get there, but we need to first make sure that we're there. Um, and so we'll, we'll look to save a tree, since obviously, they were at the authority on the EAF, to, uh, to, you know, to give the status of the tree, the protection plan for the tree, and then they can now kind of tell us what it is, and then, you know, the Butterfield has said, you know, cause I said, well, I don't know if you wanna go down the path of kind of undoing an easement, you know? And they don't want to, so their, their preference would be to, um, you know, kind of extinguish the, you know, their preference would be to replace the tree, not extinguish the easement.
Right, and then the easement would continue with, with the new tree.
With the new tree, yeah, yeah, so, um.
But I think that's basically, I think it's, whatever happens, I think it's gonna be your decision based upon what the experts from savatory say.
Yeah, and I, and I communicated that to the developer, that it is, it is, it is the planning board decision. The reason that the mayor, the village board were brought in is cause we, we wouldn't make the assumption to take it out of the, out of the developer's escrow. Um, we've got issues with that before, and, and understandably, in this one, it's, it's our second opinion, if we want to get a third opinion, um, but I think it's, it's, it would be a village, you know, and the only one that can obviously engage a vendor and incur expense is the, is the, is the village board, trustee's, and the mayor, so.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify that for me, because my question, I, I'm interested to know, would, do the costs of addressing this concern about the beach tree, are the costs covered by an escrow, is there an escrow existing?
Well, I, I, I don't think, my concern would be, until you know what happened, how do you, how do you justify that it's a, that it's an applicant? I mean, I guess it is, right, I mean, just.
Well, the site, if the site, um.
Well, wait, no, hold on, just that, that the, obviously, if you have questions, obviously, and that require a consultant, right? Which obviously, none of us are arborists.
Right.
So for us to know that a statement that's being made is accurate, and the village has to get their own, get their own independent decision on that, um, what do you think?
Well, I, I would equate it to any, if they made any changes to stormwater, if they made any changes to the sewer water lines, I think that would be on, you know, the applicant.
So you think the, the savatory expense would be justifiable, I mean, obviously, the first one, we wouldn't look to.
Yeah, you can't, you can't charge them for both, but you can certainly charge them for one of them.
Okay, so I think savatory makes the most sense, cause they're the ones that'll produce a report, and I think it really kind of carries the most weight, because it's, you know, they were, they were there from the beginning.
Yeah, I think, I think the first one, Dave just got in as like a preliminary quick kind of assessment.
Well, yeah, because, because the, the letter that we got, you know, kind of said, you know, it basically just kind of inferred that they're gonna take the tree out immediately. And so I had replied and said, hey, hold off, if you could hold with us, unless there's, you know, unless you, unless you can, can confirm that there's some sort of imminent, you know, life safety issue, working around the tree was always the plan. There was always to be a fence around the drip line of the tree, and it was always supposed to be in, you know, either in the way, or at least in place, or at least, you know, whatever we're calling it, that working around the tree was always part of the scope of the project anyway. So it doesn't create any new hardship for it to remain, whether or not it's, you know, dead wood or live wood, I mean, it's just, it's the same size, I mean, it sits there inside a fence. So I don't really, I don't wanna feel rushed to make this decision, and then ultimately not have the answers that we need when the residents, cause obviously, we're, we're here to, you know, to represent the code and the residents, and so when they have questions, it shouldn't just be, you know, shrugging our shoulders. So I think that, well, I think the best way to do that is by savatory, um, John feels obviously we can take it out of escrow, which I think is, which is obviously good for the residents to hear as well. I, I'm sure, yeah, sure we can do two.
Is there escrow?
I don't know, yeah.
One thing I didn't realize, I spoke to somebody in town that were asking me about it, and I told him, you know, right now, it's kind of up in the air. And he told me that that tree was actually, actually had a plaque, a memorial plaque, for somebody who was instrumental in the town, or in the hospital, or whatever. And I'd never seen the plaque before.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
Is it still there, according to the?
I don't know, there was nothing in approval about the plaque, or the easement about the plaque, but it doesn't mean.
The idea was, would, would it set into the earth?
Yeah, yeah, sometime in the forties.
Wow, that's too bad. I wonder if it just got grown over and.
Maybe.
Can I?
Or maybe it had some scrap value.
About the question of whether or not an escrow exists, um, should an escrow not remain intact until whatever project has been approved is completed, and there's a certificate of occupancy? Like, I'm just sort of thinking about other projects in town, have we?
Not for something like this, but for something where there's a continuing work being done on, like I said, stormwater or sewer and water, where you have somebody going out there all the time to do the inspections, and yes, there probably should be an escrow. You know, but for something like this, I mean, it wasn't required in the resolution, so to ask for one now, I guess you can always ask for a standing escrow, and, you know, what's the worst they're gonna have, say, other than maybe, uh, no, and a couple other nice choice words to have?
So all stormwater has been?
More suit to follow.
So basically, what you've said, I, I am assuming then that all stormwater has been.
I, I think, usually, I wasn't involved at the, you know, I wasn't involved in the planning board approvals, this was all approved before I got involved, but normally, yes, if you have given this, the extents, the extensive stormwater and sewer work, they should have probably posted some type of escrow to cover the inspections. But I, I think you have the right to ask for them to cover the expenses of savatory. Um, you know, whether they wanna do a standing escrow, you can ask them, but. Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll have to get a, we'll have to get a quote from them first, and I presented to, to Butterfield Realty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Have we done, um, just out of curiosity, have, have there been other situations where we've had to have the, uh, tree looked at by an arborist?
Not that I'm aware, I mean, not for, not as a condition of site plan approval.
Cause I'm not sure if it's a really high fee, like.
I'm not sure, but it depends.
I, I wouldn't think so, I mean, I would think that they're regurgitating the work that they've already done, right, which is, okay, this is the, and they're giving an opinion on, you know, kind of how we got where, you know, where we are, um, and then the condition, the current condition of the tree, and their, and their, and their recommendation as to whether or not it's treatment or removal, or, you know, the last arborist said it was, it had, uh, it had a fungus which, which could have been treated. Both of the arborists felt that it, you know, that the, the, the last fall drought was, um, was a contributing factor. So it just depends what the, you know, what the preservation plan says. And then what their opinion is, but yeah, I don't think, we've never, we've never had anything where it's a condition of site plan approval, and then an easement, and.
You'd have to do it, yeah, I just don't, I'm, I'm just, my gut is that it's not a huge fee to prepare, for an arborist to come out and look at it, but again, that might be different.
Travel time, probably, yeah. Were they local?
Westchester Hawthorne?
Oh, well, they're not that far, okay.
But savatory as well, I've had some experience with them. But savatory as well, I've had some experience with them, just, you know, projects, and it doesn't seem like that's a huge component, but again, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Exactly.
It would be odd, you think about a tree that's, you know, a hundred plus years old, that all of a sudden, a drought affects it. And I'm sure there's been many.
Well, there were a lot of trees that got stressed, yeah.
Yeah, but, but what ends up, what ends up happening in, in, was a drought situation, is the root structure ends up expanding further and further out, trying to seek water.
And this one couldn't.
So if you don't have a big enough perimeter, then all bets are off.
But I may be losing a very, very, very large tree on my property because of that drought, so. And I know of other people that have lost huge trees, so.
Maybe it was the bat infestation.
All those northern long-haired bats. Long-eared or long-haired, I don't know.
All right, anything else? Bushido Jun?
So moved.
All favor?
I.
Who's second?
Judith.
It's always Judith. Judith never moves anything.
All righty.
Thank you.
I wanted to watch Dave calculate the parking.
What to, uh?
But, you know, the higher.